Sit down. So we are going to start our town commission meeting at seven p.m. October, January, July. Well, I was reading. July twenty fifth, please stand. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
One nation under God.
That.
For God, thank you once again for entrusting this with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment to make the right decisions for our citizens here in our town. And we honor you and always say this evening, in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Right, maybe that first, let's do, let's do that when we get to consent. Adding the agenda item off, or does it matter?
I think we can do it now.
Yes. So do I have to give him the gavel over to him? Here's.
You could just say that we're.
Yeah, over here.
Okay. We are making a school amendment to the agenda, and I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve the addition of the school item to the agenda, consent agenda. Let's go.
All in favor?
Uh, five.
Okay, so the first thing is the fun thing, that's the CD proclamation with Aaron Russell. Oh, I missed roll it off, I'm sorry.
I got it.
We're all here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Russell. I'm the membership program specialist from the Florida League of Cities, which is located in Palatka, Florida. And just for the benefit of the audience members who may be unfamiliar with the Florida League of Cities, we have served as the united voice for Florida's four hundred and eleven cities, towns, and villages since nineteen twenty-two. And our will is to meet the needs of our cities by providing proper casino, education resources, and other services for our cities. And of course, always standing up for the rights of government closest to the people, governments like the town of Oakland. And so I do want to take a moment to say thank you for being an active and dedicated member of the league. And a special thank you to Commissioner McMullin, who serves on the league's board of directors. And I just want to say thank you for the very warm welcome this evening. You have a lovely town and lovely people in it. So I'm very excited to be here because it is my special honor to recognize Vice Mayor Satterfield for his twenty-five years of service to the town of Oakland. Twenty-five. And the award I'm here to present you with this evening is the John Land Years of Service Award. That's named in recognition of John Land, who was the mayor of Acapella for more than sixty years. And so this resolution recognizes our elected officials like Vice Mayor Satterfield for their extensive dedicated years of service. And the reason why this is a celebration is the fact that, as I said at the beginning of my talking points, that local governments, the government closest to the people. And so through your service as a local elected official, you have touched countless lives. Through your service here at the town of Oakland, and that is what the Florida League of Cities wanted to recognize tonight. And I also learned that he is a certified Santa Claus, so that is another piece of service to this community that I just absolutely love. So, you know, congratulations on both roles there. But if you don't mind, I'd just like to read a few of the part of this resolution. It says, whereas America's municipal governments have long relied upon the unselfish leadership of their citizens for local self-government, and Florida's municipal governments pivot time on a roll as the level of government closes to the people. And whereas this reliance places extraordinary responsibilities upon citizen legislators, our municipal elected officials, who make significant sacrifices of their time and energies on behalf of their citizenry, often for little to no compensation, making this commitment a true labor of love. And whereas municipal leaders strive for excellence and the government secure city, town, or village, and commit themselves to providing quality services, governing effectively, and working to improve the quality of life. And whereas several terms in office are a high compliment that voters give to an official. And with these years of experience comes a strengthening of wisdom, discernment, and strong leadership skills that bring tremendous value to the municipal governments of Florida. And whereas Mike Satterfield has held office in the town of Oakland for twenty-five years and is recognized for this achievement. So on behalf of the Florida League of Cities, I want to say thank you for your municipal service, and congratulations on twenty-five. Are we hoping for a photo?
Yeah. Oh, we're good.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't see the recording. I can actually see a world there. I'm sorry, I can't see the recording. I can actually see a world there.
Yeah, just give me a minute.
We're gonna take a minute. And we'll resume in a couple. All right. That's, okay, so on the agenda, we are at public forum. This is a forum where anybody who is not already on the agenda wishes to speak on a subject matter. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Consent agenda, does anybody have any questions or comments at the table?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the addition of the school.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Then moved and seconded, any questions, any comments from the audience or the table? All in favor? All right. Okay, we're moving on to the fun stuff now. Other policy matters, capital improvement plan. You all have a handout on that. Andy will be presenting.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to see it that great, but is there anybody that's watching it?
Have copies at the table, right?
Scroll.
Yeah, if anybody wants a copy of it, it's on the table.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the town commission. The item on the agenda that you had before you this evening is the first time, I believe, that the town is going to be adopting a capital improvements plan as part of the fiscal year budget. There may have been one in the past, but I know as of recently, Renee and myself thought it would be a good idea, our finance director, to kind of get all the larger type of capital improvements into a plan. So as we move into the future, we can add to the list of projects and wishes and things that we know we will have need for over the next five years. In some towns, in some municipalities, they even go as far as ten years. So what you have before you are capital purchases such as, you know, equipment, vehicles, assets is basically the larger type purchases that are over ten thousand and kind of just sets forth the needs of the town. And that the funding is going to be there, but we want to list it out, all projects, all things. Like, some of these are necessities that we're gonna need, such as AC units, street repaving. Those are the types of things that we want to look at as we move forward to maybe start setting aside some money in every fiscal year budget. So when we do have the larger expenses, we're not having to go out and finance it, or not having to go out and try to find the money. And we're planning for those expenses. So over time, as the town grows a little more, and we control some of our personnel expenses, and I think we're there where we have a great, we're gonna have the right-sized staff to, once the town grows out, to be able to provide the services. And as some more of the revenues come in, we'll be able to start funding some of these capital improvements. So if you look at the total, you know, it goes out for the next five years. But if you look at the total for what we could come up with, what the department heads came up with, was there's probably, there's basically about sixteen million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars worth of capital requests over the next five years. So if you compare that to our budget, that equals one entire budget here. So as we know, you know, these things aren't gonna be funded every year, and it's just, it's a wish list. But as things become priority, they move further up, closer up in the years to be funded. So, you know, I can go over each of the different projects with you, but you can see they're, 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 they're pretty extensive lists, and they will grow over time, and as we complete them, we'll mark them off for capital improvements plan. And so these are just a couple of the things, and I'm sorry I don't lie down, but I did get a photograph somehow past that desk, but.
Um, here it is, here in front of the type of projects that you see in the town hall purpose plan. We'll start a street disservice team with our, so not only to just spend the money, it's a lot more. I mean, this year's budget, the fun projects that we know are coming in the future. So the money will be sitting in the bank for me to do that. But that's the idea for the next time we get this going. And then, you know, there's gonna be an E that's been over, probably any public works facility. You see, there's a picture, you know, an installation that's coming down without our own, without our own facility. I think there's been more residential neighborhood's come in and play here. You know, this has been here the last fifty, fifty years. So as the town has grown from, you know, twenty years ago to now, we utilize that same facility. So those are things that are necessities for the town in the future. And then, you know, equipment is up on the CIP. We have a need for trucks. We have a hundred thousand mile policy on them, and we're even driving further than that if they'll make it. But at some point, and you have to replace an engine, it's just cheaper to purchase a new truck. So we know those needs, and we can plan for those needs, and that's what we'll see in the, in the CIP. Along with the track where it's thirty years old, you know, that's gonna need to be replaced. So let's go ahead and identify it and put it in the plans. Our police guard, you know, see, you can take it with, remember, you see, you know, that's so many miles on them, the seats are worn out so much that the stuffing's coming out of the back of them. So we want to make sure that we provide the work environment for our employees. And as we get into, hopefully get onto a rotation where we can afford two police cars every, every year for the next five years, and we do a five-year rotation. And over time, that will save the town money. But for now, we only have one in this year's budget, because that's all the budget would allow for. Then if you look at some capital improvements that you will see in this year's budget, when I do the presentation, you'll see that some of the highlights are the laptops for police officers. Currently, we have laptops that you would buy at like Office Depot, similar to kind of like your iPads. And these are equipment that rides around, bounces around in a car, and the officers utilize it, you know, day in and day out from their car. And it gets a lot of use, and so the chief has requested twenty new laptops that will, that will match the RMAS system, that will be quicker for the officers, and that are also won't break down, as you can see here, here in this entire park. That's, I think I was saying yesterday. And we got some interior painting, even smaller things, but they do cost money to do in the police department. You see, two different colored walls when you walk in, so we want to keep up with our payments, but we want to identify that so it's not a expense that just pops up and it's on the back of our minds, and all of a sudden, we gotta buy the money to do it. And then a speed trailing player reader. You can see there that's the digital reader, and it's, it doesn't really, it's kind of beyond its useful life. You can see it's got the half a letter too, but we're looking at some other options that come up. But those are expensive, they cost forty-three thousand dollars for the town. The school, talk about the garden school real quick, you know, we just replaced, we're gonna, we just purchased new flashing lights. So twenty years from now, and those need to be replaced again, we'll put that in the CIP. And within the five years, we've got to replace the lights. Bathroom updates, the same way. Those are scheduled out for a couple, two or three years from now in the CIP. And then requests for a covered outdoor lunch area, which currently has the temporary tarp. To make that a solid surface so that I have more room for our students over the particle and keep them out of the weather when it rains and out of the sun. So those are things that you'll see in the plan that we know that we're gonna need in the next five years. It's not gonna be this year, but it may be three years out, but we need to start planning for those expenses. And then we've got the security tanks that we recently did, which was done this year. That, you won't see that in the CIP, well, you'll see it in this year, but it'll be completed. And then there's probably a need for some sort of new modular classroom, or a need to purchase our own. We currently pay close to, I think, thirty, thirty thousand dollars a year to lease that. Those are things we need to look at, because we could have, we may be able to just purchase that to make a payment for ten years and own the building that lasts another ten years. So right now, that's a fixed call, and it'd be taking a look at replacing that. So that's sort of it for, that's it for the CIP presentation. I'll stand for any questions that you may have. This is gonna be a working document, gonna be something that you'll see if you adopt with the yearly budget. And just because we adopt the plan and this next fiscal year, the twenty-three point four fiscal year, a lot of those projects aren't in this budget, but it'll give us, we had to identify it, and then next year, you'll see, start seeing the button here that we adopt, and see those, just those plans that are funded in the budget. So this is our first year doing this, and I think it's a good planning tool, and it's done by a lot of, most all municipalities in the, in the state, throughout the nation.
That's an excellent presentation, and I think this is a very good way to think about how we have big expenditures in the plan forum. But do we have any questions at the table? Knowing that this is, you know, this is, this is a preliminary presentation, and that going forward, you know, before we adopt the budgets, we may be able to make some changes or additions.
The only thing I would like to see on it is something in parks recreation, which be in my venue. We had talked about at one point, you know, the coverance for these parks, because it's so hot and determined, and it was just way too expensive. But if we can put that in the CIP, we might be able to, you know, in the next year to, you know, cover these parks, so it's not so hot on these kids.
And that's a discussion that we've had before. We did put a pavilion in, and so there is shade now. And I would really like, as I've said before, to work towards something that's permanent, not something that in five years we'll have to replace them again.
Well, that's the idea, we put some sort of permanent coverage to them that.
Not the ones we were talking about before. Okay, so yes, I'm, you know, and that needs to be for all the parks.
So that would be, that's a perfect example that Commissioner Satterfield brought up is, these are, those are the types of things that is, as, you know, the commission never stays the same. The projects, there's always different priorities and projects. And so as new things come up, we can add those to the CIP. We can put a number to them, no matter if it's fifty or a hundred thousand. And then when you get to that year, that allows everybody to kind of prioritize, you know. What do you want to spend our money on? Do we want to spend it on the pavilions, or do we have a better, more need this year for resurfacing?
We can keep on adding to the wish list, and it doesn't hurt and doesn't.
Right, and then if you have grants that become available, they like to see that you have it in your plan. You know, we look, we've been planning for this for the last ten years, and we just haven't been able to.
I just want to be circumspect about what we add to this.
Yeah.
So Joseph, do you have any questions?
I'm ready. I'm ready. I love it. I mean, I, I do, I love it. I will, a request I would like to have is, have this like a live document, sectioned house somewhere that we can access, and then categorize on each item and each year. So instead of, so we can just look at it, and, you know, maybe go to page, wastewater page, police page, Oakland charter, so we can see it, you know. You can have it like, have it like this, or have each, have a page that will show each category. And, you know, like you said, you know, we cross resources or grants, we can say, okay, I got this, I need this, and.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, here, 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 what, here's what I'm looking for. At least we can have it in a way we can look at it and, and access it in an updated, in a clean way.
Yeah, I know we have a shared drive, correct? But do all the commissioners have access to that? I don't know, and, you know, Office three sixty-five is another option. But we could, it needs to get into some kind of shared drive. But I like Google Docs, because you can get many comments in there, and it tracks them all. So it doesn't, you know, like what we did to Personnel, or the Personnel file. People were making comments, and it got all.
They could be protected, only a few people, you know.
Yeah, that's.
That can adjust it, but at least we can, and say, okay. Especially with different conferences and all kind of things that might come our way, and we say, okay, well, we need this.
Yeah, we could come into the twenty-first century.
But I, I really love this, just to see it on paper, but on this app.
Yes, I agree.
A little bit, sorry.
I like the pictures you added, Andy. I like the visual. The picture was very helpful. If you can add some more, I know you're not gonna put a picture of a AC repair.
No, I think, like, maybe what he was, if you're a resident even, you could click on this, and you could see.
Put it on the web.
See the type of, the idea, maybe.
Right, yeah, per category, it was per section.
And we should look at it every quarter. We really get into the habit of looking at things every quarter. So that, you know, what we need to amend the budget, or if we're adding a project or taking one out, you know, we, we are up to date, that's a pretty up-to-date way to do it, in addition to being able to make comments on the document. Rick?
I like it.
I think it's great.
It was a great plan here. Appreciate Andy putting this together.
Yeah, but there's no helicopter on yet, but I'm sure Darren will be looking for that. I know.
Gotta have something to drop them eggs every Easter, right?
All right, so are we done?
Well, you're done.
Do we need to vote on this? Yeah, I think you wanted a motion to adopt the plan. Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded, and does anybody in the audience have any comments? Okay, all in favor? Good, now you get to present the budget, tentative, tentative budget.
Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is the town, the town, the town's tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which will start October first. Keep in mind that this is just a tentative budget, it's part of the, the trim notice process that we have to notify our residences as to the millage rate that the town intends to adopt, which allows them to then come to the meetings in September to discuss their pleasures with that, or concerns with that, or their public opinion regarding town's budget. So we have two hearings in September. Those hearings are September eleventh and September twenty-sixth, and they're both at six thirty P.M. So the main goal, and Renee, and like I said, once again, the department heads, and Renee led the charge on the budget this year. And then, so what I've been involved with is just sort of kind of overseeing and getting a feel for the numbers and balancing the budget and making a couple cuts to the budget. But what we have before you is, we feel that we are able to balance the budget at the existing millage rate, which is the same millage rate as this year at six point three mills, which is basically six dollars and thirty cents per a thousand dollar valuation of your, of your home. There was an increase in property values for the year. So it will bring in additional revenues for adven-lore. But as the town grows, as you can see with the capital improvements program, we have needs. You know, the town does have needs, and in order to, in order to balance a budget, we were able to do that at the existing millage rate and not have to increase the millage rate. So what I'll do is briefly go over, I've got a quick budget presentation that kind of hits the highlights of the budget's process and the tentative budget. And I say, we'll get into this probably a little more detail possibly, maybe at our first September meeting, when our first public hearing of the budget, there may be some small, slight changes to the budget format and things of that nature. But this, this really gives us an idea that we're able to balance the budget at the existing millage rate. So. So, um.